Paul.
Okay, cool. We'll call our Port of Allen a special meeting to order and start with our flag suit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for all its standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We got quite a bit of material. Morning Jeff.
Morning.
We got quite a bit of material here Travis you've laid out for us and I'm gonna ask that you go ahead and start talking to all these matters you've got laid out here.
Okay, so we've got several different documents. We've got a spreadsheet that you're familiar with. Um, that Jeff Carey and the board staff have kind of created over the last couple of years. And if we pay attention and go to the expenses on page three.
Okay.
You'll see human resources there and then below that you'll see a pink line that says administrative expenses.
Mm-hmm.
I've been going through between the actual Cameron software, this document that we use to kind of well round the commission on where our expenses lie and creating my own document to explain what these expenses are, so that there's a a record and a reference for the commission to look at. And we're actually determining where money should be going.
Right.
So the large stapled document here that starts off with zero ten administrator.
Yeah.
Um. I've set it up in order where you see the administrative expenses and ink on page three.
Yeah.
And then you'll see that we go through the office supplies, the postage, some signage. Um. And then you retain the old names from the previous Excel style spreadsheet that we use just for reference.
Okay.
Um, but some of these columns needed meatballs because they had been. When they got.
One moment commissioners.
Yes.
Our meeting Zoom has a passcode on it.
Has what?
Has a passcode on?
We set it up for the meeting of Aaron.
Oh, so it retained the passcode.
So it retained the pass.
So we're zooming but not recording?
No, it's recording.
We're recording. We're not allowing other people into the meeting.
Okay. We'll just um.
Can you remove that?
Thanks to that catch.
Uh, that is what I am attempting to do. I don't know how to do it. So. Give me like two more seconds.
So when we pick up where we left off, when she resolves this um we'll just jump right into it where you are.
I'll I'll raise for the point.
Yeah.
Okay.
How we doing?
I'll double check.
Okay, no problem. So as we have some uh this commissioner Sheridan, we've had some technical difficulties logging in with a password to ensure that y'all can chime in with us. Um, we'll catch up here in just moments momentarily. If you're if there's anybody on. I don't see anybody.
Okay, no, there's no one on.
Okay.
Was it something you don't?
Somebody just binged in, right?
That's me. Oh, shit, okay.
So when you when you did that, um, if there were had there been somebody waiting?
I wouldn't have seen it.
You would have seen it?
I would not.
No, but right now we would, right?
Right now we would.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're good.
Yes, and make the announcement again please.
What's that?
Uh, make the announcement again.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
That's me.
No.
Well, no.
All right.
This is another party.
We're here. Okay, this is Commissioner Sheridan. We had a little technical difficulties uh to allow you all to chime in here. On Zoom, we had to do a we had to do a re redo our password.
Take off the password.
We had to remove the password so you all could get in, so. All right. So we had begun the meeting, but you haven't missed anything because we're gonna recap our our start that we had five minutes ago. Um, for those that are on Zoom, uh, we began at nine, so in the last few minutes before we uh reconfigured our our removing the password, we're back in our meeting again, so Travis, you wanna just uh give us a quick summary of what what last few minutes consisted of so that everybody on board there in Zoom world can hear what we've.
Yes, so the purpose of this special meeting here at ten AM is to uh have a workshop regarding the budget to inform the commissioners on the process for how we are newly evaluating budget items to integrate into the spreadsheet system that we've been familiar with for the last few years.
Yeah.
Um, several of the categories when entered into the accounting system got migrated together. And I think that that may have been a source of confusion for a little while.
Okay.
And I'm attempting to break that down by working through the accounting system and determining the entire last year's expenses.
Yeah.
So that we can see exactly what we spent last year, calendar year, and then be sure that the categories set for those in the budget that the commission is approving.
That's wonderful, okay.
And we'll be able to integrate that into how we set up reporting going forward.
Mm-hmm.
So. This is a, I think, an important stat for us to be able to uh uh, set the reports up in a more measurable and uh just easier manner to digest.
Okay.
Um, so I'll start off here at the administrative expense column where we have office supplies, postage, signage. It's pretty self-explanatory. Um, but uh, last year we pulled about seven fifty there and this year I'm only recommending about six hundred. Small reduction due to the fact that we saw that over the calendar year, we weren't quite using that much, but I still want to, you know, buffer in there because, well, sometimes office expenses in pretty sport, there are new consume consumables that we need.
Okay.
Um. And that's just paper.
Yeah.
Pens and clips and, you know, I don't think I've ever bought a box of pens to bring to the office because, well, they're pretty much free all over town, right? Not that we always, you know, take them on purpose. It's just a lot of us just work out where the more they're there for us to have.
Okay.
You know, that's why they're it's marketed.
Okay.
Um, postage, uh, self-explanatory, that's literally getting out all our bills. We uh changed over from using the stamps dot com system because our volume wasn't high enough to justify a monthly fee plus plus it was like a three cent reduction per stamp.
Okay.
I have a question real quick. On some of this, could we go through doing it electronic payments versus mailing to help save money in postage? Or would that be more expensive?
We could. Um, it might be more cumbersome for our accountant, but I'm not sure. Something that we can look into. Um, it's just that we work through the county and the county prints those checks. So they would have to do the ACHs for us and that is a more difficult process for the county to do. Because I had a hard time getting them to wire the money for the purchase of the well because it's a big deal for them to ACH.
But most companies.
But the we're not we're not we're not working with the company, we're working with the county.
Right.
Yeah, but most businesses whatever dues like, you know, they do electronic deposits, the government. Pays people electronic.
So I can I can look into that, but I believe the answer is going to be that the county does not want to ACH our bills.
No, we have to shift with how the county, we have to adjust to their what they're doing.
Okay, I'm just trying to bring this up to the modern era as well.
So signage, uh, we typically need newer replacement signs throughout the facilities, um, sometimes just to update information. Um, we're only looking at about, we spent about three hundred dollars back there on that. Um, we actually didn't have a budget for that last year that had any monetary value. Closest one I could find was logo merchandise in the previous uh budget detail, so I increased that to about four hundred.
Okay.
Makes sense.
So uh administrative uh expenses miscellaneous um services, um, this would be uh things that are just not tallied individually. Um, kind of combined, this is like meeting recording services, membership dues, conferences and training, but just the fees for those conferences and training, not the actual like travel expenses and such. That's another category.
Okay.
So those were combined from various other ones like the advertising and promotion had two separate columns on it before. It's got maneuvered.
Um, what page you on now?
I'm at the bottom of page three.
You still are, okay.
The second page on the budget.
All right.
On the large table.
Okay. I see that for you.
Other services, administrative advertising and promotion, Mason Web TV. Membership dues. And I think that the advertising and promotion, we had about six hundred in there last year. I'm bringing that down to about four hundred. We we didn't, we spent a little over three hundred last year. That's mostly like hearing notices and any kind of marketing that we do, which we do very little of. An example is the the sign that we put up on the railing that, you know, advertisers put the gazebo in the meeting room or for rent.
Right.
And then like public hearing notices like we'll have to do for when we uh approve the budget here next month.
All right. Was there anything that stood out and and with some of the changes shared?
Yeah, so one big standout was uh, well, the membership dues, if you go to page three. You'll see that on the uh, on the big stapled ones.
Yeah. Well, they're not numbered.
Yeah, I didn't.
That's all right. I've got it. I see.
Should do.
Then I kind of labeled, you know, this is all the memberships that we currently pay for and how much it costs. Um, EDC is the largest of them in twenty five hundred. Um, the WPPA doubled since last year. Um, they did a rate study and determined that uh some of the smaller ports needed to pay a little more.
Really? I thought it was working out the other way.
No.
No, I did. I thought that's what they were gonna were working on. All right.
Yeah, it it ended up that smaller ports ended up paying some more money and uh the mid-sized port started paying a lot more money.
Okay.
And then the largest of the ports were paying an unfair share of the dues. Uh, they were paying way too much.
Tens of thousands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, how mu- how much was our increase? I didn't see.
It was uh, it used to be six hundred, now it's just under twelve. It's one thousand one hundred forty.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it literally almost doubled. Yeah, still it's
all right.
Well worth it though.
We still have a membership with Lita. Um, I I get all their emails, their meetings. It's one of the ones I don't have time to participate in. And I don't know about the rest of the commission, but.
We used to be able to get grants, you know, I think we dealt with them for some of the grants that we and that's why and also some of the information about grant writing. Um, now that Cynthia I can't remember who was the one who was I think Cynthia Weed was her name.
Yeah, well, she uh, she's the one that wrote our bond and was heavily involved in.
Yeah, but she was also.
Financials for.
She was also involved with I think.
With Lita.
Yeah, and so she was very helpful.
I mean, it doesn't like, that's a lot.
How much is it? I'm sorry.
It's four hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
It might be worth staying.
And that's what you kind of reiterated last year.
Yeah.
So um, it's still in the budget.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, MR MRSC rosters is going to increase. I've received emails on that. They have not posted how much.
Okay.
Um, that's because of their budget was slashed in the last biennium.
Okay.
See.
Okay.
Um, and then WAPRO is pretty important. That's the Washington uh Association of uh Public Records Officers.
Oh, yeah, that's important.
And both Justine and I are members of twenty five dollars each, so.
Okay.
Mason Journal, that's gonna increase too because one of the problems that we've had is that you haven't been able to get the digital access.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to pay individual digital access uh amounts for the commission. So that will increase.
How much is the paper one?
It's a hundred and twenty for the paper. It's another let's say it's like eighty-five per subscription.
For a year?
Five, but a hundred and twenty a year for paper and.
Yeah.
Well, how about for at least for me, because I like to get it. How about if I do just a paper subscription? I'll pay for my own.
Okay.
I don't need a digital prescription.
Okay.
I mean, because if if I need to be looking at anything, I could come in and, you know, I mean, that's what we're, that's what this facility, um, you know, we I could come in here and do what I need to do if I need to go and and look through something or or read it.
Yeah, I make time every Thursday or Friday morning depending on what my time looks like and I sit down there.
We should just have one digital, in my opinion, but if we're not here.
Yeah, I wouldn't probably use the digital. It's because I don't like sitting at the computer.
That's fair, that's fair.
Yes. So I'll pay for my own, um.
And then. And one way or another, like, I mean, it's important, I think, that we are able to find ways that I'd guessed it.
I can come in though as well.
Okay.
And so forth.
And we can, we can keep that at that level then.
That way you you just you have one digital, it's 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 for you and and we don't come in, we just get under underneath your veil and do what we need to do. Don't see the need. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but every little bit counts, so.
Sure.
I'm I'm on board with that, okay.
Um, and North Mason Chamber Commerce Chamber Commerce Dues, I believe, are gonna increase.
What part?
Oh, yeah, we paid a hundred and five last year.
Okay.
I don't think it'll go much more than a hundred and it won't go to two hundred, I know that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I think it's important to be in, have a membership.
There it is.
That was important, yeah. Who's represent?
That's who we are, I mean, are for sure, okay.
All right, so yeah, so that actually I I put it in a relative increase from, it was four thousand fifty dollars last year and spent forty four hundred in the previous year.
Mm-hmm.
So we're over budget on that one, so I've put it at a five thousand dollar mark in that.
Okay. Where are you now?
Down here.
Okay.
Here for.
Okay, got it. That's it, sorry.
Top.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow the bouncing ball here. All right.
Okay, we'll look to the next page. We've got conferences and training ha- after that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I set the budget up because we didn't really have much accounted for in the previous year. Um, our last budget had twenty-two hundred for travel, meetings, conference fees. Um, we were very conservative and we only earned six hundred and ninety dollars for the previous year.
That's good.
Because we just did small ports.
Oh, I think for my own.
Yeah, the the
You did, that's.
The fees that we paid to get into small ports.
Yeah.
And then there was uh
Hope you're okay with that. Yeah.
Probably change this last year, probably start again.
So if we look at the conferences and training portion here, I have actually added line items for training and conferences. So uh, each commissioner and each director can attend the small ports conference is my suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that would have uh, um, uh, our entrance fee essentially and our, you know, lodging space one. And then we also have uh, one commissioner, each can attend one additional WPPA conference during the fiscal year.
I think it's more than reasonable.
So that, you know, if if one commissioner wants to go, you know, finance and trade seminar environmental seminar or the spring conference or the annual meeting at the end of the year, we have that in the budget so they can choose to do that.
Right.
Um, and then I set it up for the the executive director would attend two additional meetings and one of those would be the director's conference, which is probably the most key.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one would be whatever one seemed to be the area of training that was required the most for the year. Whether it be uh, finance or um, going to uh one of the other annual meetings, the spring meetings, depending on what's actually on there. So that would uh, take our budget pull from twenty-two hundred that we had last year to forty-five hundred. Okay, for the next year. To be within that range. That brings us to the next subcategory where we flip to page four on the budget detail, the actual itself spreadsheet portion. And we end up in the communications section and that's pretty self-explanatory. That's our phone lines and our cell phones. Our office line here and our internet. Um, all necessary functions, but there's also a bit of fire monitoring that's been kind of put into play because our fire system was not communicating properly. And we had to upgrade a phone, we had to add an additional phone line with what canal communications to get our fire system to communicate properly with intel systems. I added a new category for digital storage and that's because uh our phones and everything else, they have limited storage capacity and if anybody starts to go over that, then we're not able to retain documents. So I've always since I I walked through the door, it's added at ninety-nine cents a month. Uh, an additional fifty gigabytes of storage on the director's phone because of the pictures and everything else and continuing to take.
Okay.
Um. So far, we haven't seen that any commissioners have used that kind of um, need on our phones and have been able to use the what's what's given on their phones.
Oh, that's.
But I figured it should be a budget column because there may be additional storage that needs to be purchased for various other things at the office.
Okay. Think that phone should have minimal service for one thing and it's for to communicate, not for the being a small port, just uh, just has to have a a one main purpose.
Correct.
You know, not the additional cost and they all add up, right? So anyway.
Uh, moving on, we've got uh, travel and uh, that will flip over to the next page. You get past Verizon Wireless and digital storage and you'll that's paid over your land, on travel mileage, parking travel, lodging, travel dining. Um, this takes up the uh lodging and dining expenses that would be accrued from commissioner conferences. Now, this is another place that, you know, we may be able to trim some fat down the way.
Um, I thought we covered that already.
No, because that was just the conference fees.
Oh, yeah.
Not the actual.
Those were just the conference fees, bringing all those conferences.
All right.
Um, this actually takes up the the travel lodging and the dining, the parking and the mileage.
Okay.
Something that commissioners haven't really been charging the port, which they it's an expense they can.
Okay.
So it's just something that we should discuss and have integrated into our budgets if we're going to utilize those. If we don't utilize those, then it's just a savings to the port.
All right.
Okay.
So do we need to make a decision on that?
No, and we're not making any decisions on any.
No, I I know, but I mean eventually.
Yeah, eventually, yep. In fact, the next time we have a um, a budget meeting, we will be uh, really making some decisions and and getting this this document here, which is our our spreadsheet, you'll see that you'll see all these numbers on the sides and the changes to the actual categories. Um, these numbers on the side here represent the exact barcodes in our accounting system.
Sure.
That correlate with these um, categories.
Yeah.
And the names are gonna get some changes, so it's easier to uh kind of uh, narrow those down.
Okay.
And then when the office sends their bills to Aaron for monthly vouchers.
Okay.
These numbers are gonna be stamped on every one of those bills. So Aaron doesn't have any kind of leeway where they go.
Okay.
So we'll decide where those goes before they actually get accounted for. Or I am unsure where one can go. I can discuss with Aaron and see where the best place for it to be.
Okay.
Then we move to financial expenses and that's probably the largest of our expenses because it includes our insurance payment.
It includes our what?
Insurance payment.
Okay.
So we flip to the next page, that bank fees, credit card processing and.
There is.
So in previous uh budgets, we put the entire amount in the budget and then we subtracted a portion of it later, gonna general fund minus water fund, water fund minus general fund scenario. Um. Instead, I've just made that adjustment here and will make that adjustment in the water fund. So we know exactly how much this year is gonna be coming out of the water fund for insurance in this budget.
Okay.
Um, and it'll be accounted for already taken away in this part of the general fund budget.
Question, what was the bank fees for the six hundred dollars?
So those are uh, ACH uh, banking transaction uh, plugins. It's uh
Yeah, that's all I needed to know.
Our our cash accounting um, for uh for commercial accounting with the bank. Moving on, we've got the IT expenses. Um, that is a pretty big portion of our bills as well because we have that great uh, American and helped us contracts.
How much longer?
Um, October twenty-sixth.
Okay.
It's right near when we're starting to talk about budget again.
Yeah, okay.
So um, there's gonna be a little bit of savings there.
Yeah.
Um, and the way I worked this budget to get the most accurate numbers is I went from January what's here. I worked through our vouchers from August of twenty-five to September of twenty-four.
Wow.
Okay, so that because things were so different before I took over and did a lot of changes, I wanted to get the most accurate picture of a one calendar year. Now it's on January to December.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't have those numbers yet. But this way I could see really where we were and be able to account for where the money's gonna be coming from and going. So thankfully Enduris did not blow up. We're actually paying about a thousand dollars less, I believe, this year than last year. Um, and then we have a tw- seventy-five twenty-five split with the water system there, so general fund responsible for seventy-five percent of our trades and then then water funds responsible for twenty-five percent.
Did you um, in in communicating with with Enduris, um, they helped you come up with that that?
No, that's that's something that we came up with here and with experience.
Okay.
Um, that was kind of uh, Jeff Jeff helped a lot with coming up with that.
Okay.
We kind of looked at value there, the ports assets.
Okay.
The risks
Okay.
In different areas, the nerds.
I have a
you know, as far as.
Yeah.
Things that fail, things that, you know, peo- people are injuries, you know, those those kind of things.
Okay.
And just, you know, there's still a lot of, even though the water system seems like a a important piece.
Yeah.
Um, there's still, this is the park, there's the docks, there's a lot of things that can happen with people.
Yeah.
That can go south.
Yeah.
And it's funny, we got we made it, Travis and I went down, we made a judgment call.
Um, okay.
Based upon value of what the assets are. And also the risk you know, of different types of risks that can happen. Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, infinite possibilities, but but I mean, generally speaking, the best things you're gonna run into, so.
I could see that. I mean, I I like where we settled in with that. I was curious. Okay, thank you.
Again.
Yeah, but you know, because I think originally it was proposed at fifty fifty, but we started coming down through it and
Yeah.
While there is, there's a lot of activity, we talked about the water system a lot.
Yeah.
There's still a lot of risk with the.
It's not the biggest risk by any means. Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Yeah, the question, Commissioner Kirby.
Yeah, why are we paying for, which is sewer for the kayak park, whether we offer the Allen Park.
Could be on the next page, I believe, on that.
Um, so where the, see the numbers on the side here, where these numbers stop, that the rest of that I have not finished doing the adjustments on.
Ah.
Yeah. Only those, only the columns that actually have the numbers on the side are the ones that I've finished and done the reporting on. The next time we talk about this, this will be.
Okay, sorry, I was.
No, that's okay.
And so, but it's a good question.
So he's kind of focused on the new uh, the.
So the uh, the thing about the L and our sewer payments is that we have two hookups. Okay, one hookup is literally right over there next to the uh, the bathrooms.
Yeah.
And all of our sewer gravity feeds down to that here, okay? But then the kayak park, we just have that one bathroom that is usually locked up because we can't keep the vandalism there. So we did, I did have Dawn spend some time working on it here this year and we got it operational again.
Oh.
But we have not unlocked, we haven't come up with a good enough mitigation plan to really offer to public care again.
Yeah.
So we're, we need to discuss where, how we're going to be able to do that so that we don't continually have to fix it every three months. Because somebody got that tore the toilet off.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, not that, but I mean, they tore the sink off the off the wall.
Yeah.
So, and then there's some other things that we need to address with the neighbors there too.
Okay.
Um, moving forward there, and did you see that like the kayak park was more expensive?
Yes.
Is that what you saw? Yeah, I think I saw that too when I was.
Yeah, it's like fifteen hundred versus.
Right, so um that Allen Sewer seven fifty, you know, shows up here at kayak park fifteen hundred. Um, I mean, I don't know how that got passed our our last year's budget, but I it is getting corrected this time.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
All right, so.
It was, I think there was a weird split there, remember?
Yeah, I I don't know what happened there. I think that it should have been Yeah, I I don't know what happened there. I think that it should have been. Because fifteen hundred is actually closer to what we pay for a year's worth and then seven fifty on the. There was a weird split there. The seven fifty on Allen. Facilities was getting split with the building. Yeah, so.
And I think that might have been, see, let's see, this is an issue of accounting. Had the administrative side had parks, so you have all these marketing expenses. And so I think that's how that got split.
And what we're gonna do is we're gonna account for it in one column, or we can make a note to it for the other, that it's actually part of this and that.
I can't comment, taxi that all day.
Sure, I can understand.
Yeah, as long as we can, this breaks it down, okay, this is this is this is this is.
And the previous one did too, it's just what happened was is that many of those got combined in the same columns when I got put in.
You remember where I testified here a couple meetings back and said, it's a little hard to. Make judgment calls on budgets when you have seven quadrants of expenses, meanwhile I got. In the water system and meanwhile I got over sixies listed on the spreadsheet. It's a little daunting to. Come up with a budget.
So can we go back to line by line? Let's go back up to um.
We were, you were asking questions about great financial services, sorry, and it was uh. That we're we're gonna see that taper off. Now, we're we're gonna have to still have a. An I T provider, it may not be the same one. Okay, so we will look into what our options are going forward. There's several companies that do the same thing. Um and evaluate our options on cost and actual ability. That will be one that we should probably go out for professional services bit. So we can see what everyone's offering. What they can't do for us. Recovery Financial Services Help Desk, computer hardware and computer software. I'll make a note that uh our computer hardware, we've got two fairly aged computers. Don't know when they'll be replaced, but they will need to be replaced at some point. So I, we we only spent a hundred and fifty dollars essentially on computer hardware last year. I moved that up to a two thousand dollar budget. Uh if we don't get new computers, then we'll spend a lot less than that part. But it's not my computer that would need to be replaced, it would be the other computers that Larry and Jan had used. Those ones have gotten aged. Computer software, that is a pretty large expense when we're talking about some of the other things that we. We get involved with. Now, that was one of the things that I saw in the uh accounting software is how we were actually accounting for our computer software. And our um Springbrook software, so I made some adjustments there. Because our accounting software is basically the Springbrook and it accounts for a total of nine thousand dollars. Uh of our budget. Now, three thousand of that is just for utility billing for the waters. Well, three thousand of that will get moved over to the water budget as an indirect expense. And sixty-three-ish hundred here, um so I think it actually turned it up to ninety-four.
Where are you right now in the uh budget detail?
Okay, so I am on administrative expenses. Forty-six I T.
Okay, page.
Which is page four in the near middle. Upper portion of the middle. And when we get this. Really uh uh for the next time, we're gonna actually go through a preliminary budget approval, this will be much larger part. We're gonna really blow this up.
Alright, that's fine.
Yeah, so uh on the computer software side, it, there's kind of two categories there. You got your accounting software and you got all the other types of software. That we pick up, Adobe, we have to pay almost four hundred dollars a year for. Um our Microsoft licensing and and such for uh. For the computers, um part of that is figured into our. Help desk. Our help desk bill is actually for our uh computer software. So that's, that was wrapped up into the.
I mean.
So and then uh of course, our our copy machine lease. That's about fifteen hundred a year. It depends on how much paper we use. It's an adjustable amount every month. Um it's usually an average of eighty to a hundred and ten. We try to limit our color printing, save money. And then website hosting. Last year, we paid two hundred and eighty dollars. I would suspect that we probably will spend about that much or maybe four hundred. On the next year, I haven't gotten the bill yet from. Ray at Piper Host. But we haven't made any changes to it other. We used to pay like four fifty, but we had a whole bunch of uh. Domain names that we're attached to.
Yeah, and that's not bad right there.
No, it's actually, that's, and I I made a note of that in my write-up that that is, that is, that is a great rate. I can't even get that for my business, so.
I think that's a community.
That's, that's good assault there, alright. Then we move to a professional services. The next column down, we've got our professional services, our legal, accounting, engineering, state auditor, elections and lots. So last year, of course, we next the op lobbyists. Something that we may want to consider in the future if we have fundage to do it. Um but right now, just for a preliminary look, I've got it at zero, cuz we had it zero last year. Uh our elections, um we're gonna have a ten thousand dollar bill this year-ish somewhere in there. Uh to the state, state auditor, or not state, county auditor for the election cycle. Um our state auditor was figured in at ten thousand dollars for the previous budget because we will have to pay that, but I don't believe that bill comes until January. So that's a savings that we may have. Accounted for in our last budget that we didn't spend. Might be why our numbers are a little higher than 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 they uh.
A good average, though, that's usually what it is, so.
Um and it could be less, um uh you know, if we have a an easy time of it and there's not too much strife, you know, it could be half that. So. Uh engineering services, uh we didn't spend anything on like port engineering services, just water engineering services over the last year. But there should always be an amount in there and basically need something looked at. And I doubled it from one thousand to two thousand because a thousand dollars in engineering, we're gonna get in and done.
And then you already covered, I think we're jumping around a little bit.
Yeah, I went backwards. Let's go back to legal services cuz that's the hot ticket item there. We budgeted eighteen thousand in the general fund last year and we only used sixty-eight hundred. Most of our legal services have been on the water fund. So. I elected to leave that at eighteen thousand cuz I think it's important to have a cushion there, should it be needed.
Yeah, agreed.
Uh professional services, um we had fifteen hundred last year. I raised it to two thousand because like engineering services. You you're not gonna get much done if we need to use it for anything. At a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars. So we didn't use any last year, just like the engineering services, so. Maybe next year we may find a situation where we need to acquire professional services. Leave that in the budget or it's a place that we can trim when the time comes.
Alright.
So you're on page four and you're under professional services. Now it says fifteen hundred, but then you talked about doing it two thousand.
I probably didn't.
Maybe you want, this one, you're looking at change.
The numbers in the left-hand column or what I'm proposing, the numbers in the right-hand column are last year's numbers.
Good.
And then we uh lastly, accounting services for um. This is a fifty-fifty split with the water system.
Who are you right now?
Same, same, uh same in professional services, there's column down. Uh this is what we pay Aaron, who are accounting. And it's about a little over twelve thousand a year, but split fifty-fifty, it's sixty-three hundred. I don't think that that's gonna change much. And if it does, then you know we're.
He's talking about.
Yeah, talking about different scenarios.
But you're referring to um the the fees, what you're doing, explaining the difference between general fund and water fund?
Okay, yeah, so that that I instead of keeping it all in the general fund and having some split somewhere else, I think it's easier to represent that. We only pay half that in the general.
I agree.
And show that directly translated to the water fund and have them two separate budgets.
I think it's important to keep those two separate. And it seems you see it separately.
Uh Travis, you might explain what's really dragging that. You're you're changing something, you're you're changing methodology here.
Yeah, so um. Right, so another change that will be made is that uh we will actually be asking the county to print more checks. Okay, so a lot of times we've got these separations where we've got a uh a particular bill that has a. You know, an eighty-five fifteen split, okay, and it's an invoice that we receive very. A month, while we've been paying that out of the general fund and doing these quarterly. Um reimbursements. Well, why don't we just hit it every month? Numbers are represented it linearly every month. So we have a bill and it has a fifteen eighty-five split. Well, fifteen percent of that bill is gonna be set up as a check individual on the water fund. And then eighty-five percent of that will be individual check in the general funds. There'll be more checks you'll see on the voucher list. But it'll be taken out every month.
Do we figure that out? Do they figure that out and do we pay more per check?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Well, maybe, maybe we do. We do, there probably is an amount more we pay for check.
Just question.
But I I think that it's going to be considerably easier for the commission to. ascertain where we are from month to month.
That's perfect, yeah.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, the the part is problem, uh uh basically you might end up spending more for check, or you know, because of more checks. But the the real issue is. Between accounting, between what Aaron's doing and others, we're not, you're not giving a good accurate, even quarterly view. And I pointed out some things to Travis that, you know, just can't, they can't be, and we discovered, okay, it's not gonna apply or. So this way, um while there might be a little bit more expense on the number of checks, a little more detailed run through. This will at least keep the ledgers and keep the vendor, each of the vendors. I'll say at least monthly current.
Counting paper trail, which is.
Well, that and left time in house trying to to figure that out every.
The whole, whole thing got driven by the fact that you just, you need to account for all the revenues and all expenses and. The reason we elected to take the quarterly approach was to try to save time for that and. Personally, I have no problem either way. Personally, as a citizen, but I know I have some accounting and training, but what I'm getting at is. To make it so so cleaner, at least month by month, this was what we talked about, that's very promising.
Well, I like it this way, where we're going with this. I do, I think it's cleaner.
Okay, so I will move us to, if we can find the page that says elections on top. The very first column. And then we go to the bottom of that page, it's the operations. So this is another subcategory to operations, these are kind of operations that kind of span all of our facilities. And are just general operating costs that we wouldn't dedicate to one, in the administrative building, the kayak park, the gazebo, but. Allen facilities or the North Shore facilities, uh maintenance supplies. You're looking at uh. Just things that are consumables that we need to operate. Um last year, we spent about sixteen hundred, we only budgeted a thousand. Um and the reason for that is. Didn't write that one down. I remember. That I, I believe something was coded incorrectly, which I had a note for, so that's why it was higher than it should be. So, but I I still suggested that we only leave that at a thousand, I didn't, we moved.
Keep it at a thousand, okay.
Um and then we move on to Ben's Deli Mart. So Ben's Deli Mart is just, we charge all of our gas there. On a charge account, we don't use a credit card or anything to pay for our gas. That's the system that was set up when I walked the door. Um the system can continue, I mean, we we could charge all of it to a credit card. And be buying gas wherever it's cheapest. But we've always supported. Local, local businesses, so um I don't think it's gonna be a a huge cost savings, but we spent twenty-four hundred dollars in gas. And we budgeted three thousand, so we stayed well within our our um. Our goals there, but the, this is also a split item, where it's eighty-five twenty, eighty-five fifteen. Because the water system does use a truck and we put it in that, in that category, so. That's not really accounting for that split I can leave.
That's a total for a year.
So I believe it's keeping it at twenty-five hundred or dropping it from three thousand to twenty-five hundred is acceptable. Because we have that eighty-five point bunch.
Good with that.
And that would be something, again, that would be done every month. Ben's Deli would get two checks. One would come from the water system, one could come from the general. It would just equal the total.
Yeah, that's great.
Uh tools and equipment. We had a lot of things break recently. We've lost uh our pressure washer and our blower. Um I don't know, we actually, we lost our pressure washer, our blower and our weed whacker. So uh weed whacker and the blower, we've owned for forty to dawn fifteen years. So, I mean, they, they really did their work. Um elected to not get back into having a gasoline version, went little electric. Um there was a, there is a evident cost savings to doing that. And by using the same brand, every time we buy another piece of equipment. We get another battery with it, which allows the runtime to increase. So um after we get maybe three batteries in, you don't buy any more pieces of equipment with the extra batteries, cheaper that way. Because you only need so many batteries to run these things.
Unless they decide to change the battery configuration.
Yeah, and and I don't see that really happening.
We've got about ten minutes as far as.
We're we're almost done.
So, did you account for the fact that we have to buy all that new equipment?
Yeah, um it did, I did raise it a large increase from, it was only at a hundred dollars last year. And we spent forty-seven dollars last year in the one year. Because we bought most of that equipment fairly recently.
That's great.
A a a new pressure washers. No, no, it's two fifty, three hundred of the most. Yeah, well, you don't need that big of one to do what we're doing here. You know, you just need enough, just enough pressure to do it. We're not, we're not gonna get a battery pressure washer. Something that, you know, you look at the two things, the voters, you really know, you're not, you're bringing a lot of money for a battery pressure washer. To just get. These other things like the weed whacker and the blower, they're the same price for a gas or a lighter. There's no, there's no difference. So all of a sudden, now you're not buying gas and two-stroke oil. Um so we've just got a few more columns here left, bathroom and um and facility. Supplies, that's basically our toilet paper, our soup covers. Um we spent about sixteen hundred dollars there last year. Uh we only budgeted about twelve fifty, raised it to two thousand. Cuz we kinda, we need to, um the more population we're experiencing here, the more toilet paper we're going through. More people leaves in the park.
Which is a good thing.
Administration, let's see here, we've got the operation services, the last two that I had finished so far. Miscellaneous services, uh you're basically your north mason fiber runs, all that was tied into that. That was us getting. Yard waste out of park. A lot of yard waste was actually taken out of here by some of our volunteers, but I discussed it with them and that there's only so much they can take. And stuff that has like I V and stuff in it, they don't wanna take to their property, of course. And stuff that has like IV and stuff in it, they don't wanna take to their property, of course.
Yeah.
You know, so, we've been dealing with that as, as it comes up, but then fleet maintenance. We ended up spending thirteen hundred. Uh, we budgeted fifteen hundred. And. This is port truck, oil changes, inspections, um, the new vinyl decals that were done on the truck, we've seen now vibrant and bright.
Look a lot nicer.
Um, that's, that was what we spent last year, um.
You know, I'm glad we're getting away with that, that's a free, a minimal amount for that, for maintenance on a vehicle or.
And then the last year we bought, we had to buy tires for the truck. We don't have to buy tires for another four, five years.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
Looking for things like that, trucks in really good color.
Okay.
So that really kind of covers what we've got going on here. We've got, um, some other categories here that are, I'm still working on. Um, Mason County garbage, that's really uh, tied into uh. Yeah. Yeah, this was a, these, these uh, columns that are administrative building, um, and services, this is where I haven't completely finished.
Okay.
That category, it's kind of where I've, I've tail off for now.
Okay.
But this is kind of just, it's a good, it's a representation of how I'm pushing the way the budget gets evaluated for the year. And I, this is a, a document that can live from year to year and get adjusted with all that information in it.
That's true.
So, that it's, it's there to refer to each year, so that we have a better understanding of how we're spending our money and why.
Yeah.
You're doing a good job, it's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, makes this lot of new very good.
I, I see you're making your life easier too by having.
Yes, it will make my life.
It really will, yeah. I mean, that's good. Not easier, but a little more efficient.
So that, that's really, you know, what I wanted to present to the commission at this point, and. So now they know, you know, where all these hours are going into working on, on retailering the way the budget is presented.
Okay.
So that it's a, each month when we are putting these into the right categories, it's, it's, it's a very simple. Process and we have all the, the details that we need to put them in the right spot.
Yeah. Any questions, commissioners?
No, not at this point.
Alright. Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, Tuesday, one is. You know, with having your director actually stamped the, the bar's code too and apply, that should get rid of this issue of. Mis-supplying. It's not the, uh, numbers, the total numbers are off, it's just that.
Yeah.
As far as what categories are getting what, what happened. That should solve that, well, the other thing, like, still on the board at least, as far as the. General fund goes, is that at some point, the board needs to look at a capital solace fund. Because you have assets and you have a maintenance cost, which is in our annual budget, but. Inevitably, you'll have budgets with it. Where I'm worried is. As a citizen, you're not gonna always have access to a grant, so.
That's true.
This is, and, and as you've seen in the past, insurance doesn't fix everything.
Okay.
So, um, and I know a while back, Travis and I kind of worked out, or working in insurance, it should have an asset value. And help be a starting point for saying, I would take one percent, two percent, whatever, one hundred percent. I have a, and the budget is set aside, you know, to. They're addressed capital facilities.
Yeah.
Okay.
The point is not my recollection, that has never had that. We've flunked out a number of things and a couple of things we've avoided, but. To me, especially working with counties, you know, planning the cap facilities there and seeing the different aspects there. And knowing what the board has.
That's wife's advice.
And as I said, same, that's fair.
Mm-hmm.
Even though I don't wanna see taxes go up, I do wanna see things maintained.
Yeah.
You know, we're always talking about the optimal way to maintain it, but let's start with the process that you got to some, sometime.
So look at the other end.
Yeah, optimal or not.
Yeah.
You do have maintenance area, you know, ongoing, need for a couple facilities type thing.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're, one more comment, um, just kind of along those lines, is that the uh. The money that we can put away for capital facilities could easily end up being not the entire amount we need to fix something. But the match that we need for appropriate grants.
Yeah.
To get some things.
Definitely.
So, you know, if we've got a problem that's gonna take a hundred fifty thousand dollars to fix. Well, we've got forty-five thousand that we saved for public facilities and we can find the right.
Yeah.
Grant situation, we've got the match, we can go right ahead with it. Now, you know, that's granted, we wanna continue to put money away each year, because we don't wanna count on that.
We need reserve.
So.
Continue to fill.
That's an, an integral part of how this new budget will come around.
Hmm.
And we will have a amount that we are gonna need to trim some fat off some of these other columns to get to that one.
Okay. Alright. That being said, is there any further questions, commission? Cause I, I like to get us, get ahead of the, from here, the executive, okay? Um, so we're gonna go ahead and do that right now.
Okay.
Alright, so I've got uh. I've got zero nine fifty-six and uh, we're gonna go ahead, um, and. And the executive session, we'll, we'll be going to an executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Maya, we have to end this meeting.
We're gonna end this meeting.
Okay.
Go to the next one.
I'm sorry, thank you, but we'll go ahead and end our special meeting, right, as of right now, zero nine fifty-six. And uh, and then we'll begin, um, an executive session to discuss potential litigation as allowed by RCW. Forty-two dash dot thirty dot one one zero, executive session is expected to conclude, will be done in thirty-four minutes at ten thirty AM. Action may be taken, thought, may be taken to following the executive session.
But as far as the workshop. The workshop, we just need to adjourn the workshop.
They adjourn, yeah, the special meeting, workshop is convened.
It's time to reconvene that.
With, no.
No.
It'll be entirely new meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.